Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you tonight for the blessings of the democratic republic that we live in. Lord, we thank you for elections, and Lord, we ask you now to help us unite around those that will be the leaders. We ask for a special blessing tonight for John Verriell and Deborah Portillo as they go forward for your next chapter in their lives. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor and each of the commissioners here tonight for this meeting. Help each presenter to be on track, and Lord, lead and guide us for the best plans for the City of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mayor's activity update?
Yeah, I'm going to take the liberty at this particular point is to, first of all, I see a lot of folks out there that are participated in the last election, and I want to thank everybody for running. I want to thank everybody for putting their best foot forward. I thought it was a very, you know, I would love to see more people participate in elections, but it is what it is. But I also see family members, and I also see a lot of community members. And I can't thank Debbie and John for their service enough. I think they exemplified the leadership that this town needs for the best interest of Brownsville. I welcome the new additions, the elected officials that have come and joined us, and the ones that got re-elected. I want to thank the family members for sharing your family with us. They've made a great contribution to our efforts, and I want to make sure that everybody that's sitting here today is mindful that I've been around for a little bit over six years now, and not everybody's going to agree with what this commission has done or has not done, but we've done it together. And as we go forward, we have to continue together as a team to help the people of Brownsville. So I give my utmost respect and gratitude to the people who have served, and I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, not only for myself, but on behalf of the commission and on behalf of the City of Brownsville, and I think a good round of applause is in order. And again, I'm looking forward to continuing our efforts with this commission and doing the best that we know how to do for our city. That concludes my report.
Commissioners' activity update?
I would like to thank the City Department of Health, Traffic, and Parks, along with the School of Public Health, for producing our first Sequvia in honor of Cinco de Mayo. It was very, very successful, 5,100 attendees, which is probably one of our highest, and it was a lot of fun, so thank you for your efforts, and I'm sure the community helps you as well. Thanks you, Raswell, rather. Also, just a notice, the commodity supplemental food program, a seniors-only food program, has increased its availability for 2,000 more clients until June of 2017. The program offers government cheese and commodities on a monthly basis for eligible applicants within the food bank areas of Hidalgo, Cameron, and Woolissey Counties. Applicants have to be 60 years or older and meet a low-income threshold. The availability is temporary through June of 2017 and is on a first-come, first-served basis, so I encourage those who might qualify to apply. Information, they should contact Roble Lada by calling 904-4520, and we'll be sure and put this on our website as well. And finally, I'd like to add a personal thanks as well to Deborah and John. It has been my honor to work with you. Thank you for listening and participating and really challenging me in many decisions as we moved forward with the city. I wish you well, and it's not goodbye, but rather, we'll continue to see you in other meetings.
Hopefully, if I may add, if I can bootstrap on what Commissioner Gowan was saying, you guys have been instrumental with the city the last four years of your service, two years that I've been here, and it's been an honor to serve with both of you. And I've gotten to meet both of you, you're wonderful human beings, and I know that I will see you in other boards or in other elected positions because you've done a great service to our community. So I appreciate everything you've done for the city and the friendship you've given me these last two years, so thank you.
And just to add to that, I also want to thank Commissioner Verriell and Commissioner Portillo. I can think of so many projects that you have contributed. Commissioner Verriell, just recently knocking down the Rubio Home and building a beautiful park for these children that suffered immensely long before our time, but you were the commissioner that got that done, and you can say 16 years later that you were the instrumental piece in making sure those children were honored. That was you. Thank you. And Commissioner Portillo, your contribution to the retail development of our city has been wonderful, and to know that just now on JBC you hired a retail full-time consultant to be working for the City of Brownsville, to know that we will be getting PF Changs and Barnes &amp; Nobles and all of these things, thanks to Commissioner Portillo's work. So we will continue to see you on boards, and we will continue to see you serving because that is who you are and that's what you do, and I am forever grateful that I served six years with you, Commissioner Verriell, and Commissioner Portillo, four years, and so I wish you well, and until we see each other again.
I just want to wish you both well. Congratulations. Thank you for serving. I wish you nothing but the best in your personal lives as you leave this world and you go back to what I told John, that's that a normal life.
I don't know about, I don't know about normal.
Enjoy, enjoy your families, enjoy your privacy, enjoy it most of all, and, you know, just continued blessings for you both on everything that you do. I'm going to miss you both, you know, and I just, we'll talk on a personal basis, but it's just, congratulations and thank you for what you've done for the city.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'm going to bring out, just for those of you that talked about that, the building that was knocked down and the park, I mean, the garden that's there, I invite each and every one of you to go by Los Angeles Gardens. I happen to keep watching it every day as much as I can. They got some really good stuff blooming, and I think you guys would be proud of what everybody on this commission did on that one. But it's growing, it's alive, and it looks really good, so go by and see it. Anyway, next.
We will have the City Manager's presentation.
I hope you don't mind, I'm leapfrogging on the agenda, Mayor Commissioners, but in the spirit of thanking Commissioner Deborah Portillo and Commissioner John Verriell, obviously you've done that, on behalf of the City of Brownsville, all our city employees, myself, I want to thank you so much for the service that you've done to our community. We get to know you, you get to be our friends and our working partners. You've done some wonderful things, as noted by some of the commission, for us. We wish you well. We've gotten to know some of your family members, and some of them are here, I want to thank you for that. You've really become part of the city family, so thank you so much for your service. You're very young, we know that you will pursue other endeavors and do very well because it's in your heart. You're beautiful people, you're honest people, and you do things for the betterment of our community, so we can never thank you enough. But, working with Jerry at the library, we have worked on some plaques for you to take home, give some memories of the time you served with us.
Commissioners, would you all honor us by standing up here and let's have some pictures? I invite the commission to join them down here, and Roxanna, take some, I know, I know.
I'm wearing Uggs because I got bit by a spider, but okay.
you sit down?
No, sir, thank you, thanks for letting me cut in here.
Thank you for that, Charlie, very, very, very well done. Now do we go back to proclamation or what?
So...
Just a second.
They want to say a few words. They have comments.
Just turn that microphone around, yeah, there you go.
I would just like to say a few words now, rather than at the end. If my parents would do me the favor of coming up here. I'll be brief, because over the past, I guess since I announced around January 17th, I've individually met with, if you want to hold this, I've individually met with a lot of individuals and expressed how much they've meant to me, all the different staff and departments, people that I've met throughout the four years, whether part of the city or not. And, one, because I don't want to cry, and I don't cry in public, I am not going to give a long-drawn-out speech, so it'll be very short and sweet and to the point. I would like to thank the people of District 3 for trusting me to represent them. It has truly been my privilege and honor. I would like to thank the City of Brownsville staff for allowing me to join in the incredible work you do for our city. I would also like to thank my colleagues. It has been an amazing four years working by your side. Most importantly, I would like to thank my parents, my confidants, my best friends, and my biggest champions. I am very grateful for all that I've learned from all of you. And finally, I want to wish good luck to the next administration. May you have great success in moving our community forward. True to form, I leave you with a quote from my favorite Teddy Roosevelt. Far and away, the best prize that life has to offer is the chance to work hard at work worth doing. Thank you.
Amen.
Okay, I'll try to be brief as well, and if it's okay, I'll deliver my farewell speech from up here. Good evening. I'm here now delivering my final report, and I told myself to not get emotional, but then again, I also told myself I'd started diet last week, and I didn't do that, so let's see how it goes. So I'd like to start by thanking my family, my friends, my supporters, on this campaign and on the previous ones. We ran a solid grassroots, frugal, honest, clean race. We faced a tough opponent whose campaign counted on many resources, but regardless, he's a, he was a good candidate, and I'm sure he'll do a very good job, Commissioner So we didn't have that much money, but we had big hearts, and if anything comes out of my loss is, I hope I inspire other good, honest people to run for office. You don't need a huge budget in your campaign, you just need a good team of family and friends and a big heart for Brownsville, and you can do it. So, my interest in Brownsville did not begin six years ago. I've dedicated myself to community service since I was a child, and I began attending commission meetings since the impact fee issue was introduced. I did not become interested shortly before the election, and I pledge to stay active after today's meeting. And my service to Brownsville could not have been possible without the unending support my family has given me. We have had our family business in District 4 for over 34 years now, and it's starting to take a toll on my parents', on my parents' health. Still, they sacrifice themselves, working longer hours, so I can make meetings and tend to city business. My mother, she battled cancer several years ago, and while most would retire, go home, stay home, she went straight back to work, and she's been taking care of the store all the time I've been in office. My dad is in desperate need of knee replacement surgery, and he was willing to put off that surgery four more years for me to run for office. My sister juggles so many things, Junior Service League, I don't know how many other boards she's on, but she's always out, her job at BISD, and still she helps us so I could serve. So I want to thank them for the many sacrifices that allowed me to serve our city. Now, moving on to my biggest fan and supporter, my wife, who's here with us, she was the hustle behind this campaign, and she was always there for me. She has dealt with a frustration that stemmed from being a commissioner. She was always very supportive of me, and unfortunately, sometimes we get, we face challenges on the commission and we're frustrated, and we go home, and our spouses, our families get the ugly end of it, but she always was supportive. I just couldn't have remained sane without her, so thank you for that. And I can't leave without thanking our incredible staff. I'm so proud of each and every one of you for doing such a great job, day in and day out. Although we have an organizational chart somewhere around here, I always felt like I was your coworker. I didn't see myself as above you. We were team members, and we worked towards the same goals, and we did a great job. So you were always my priority, because without you, our city would fall apart. I'm proud to say I was supportive of your compensation and benefits, because you deserve that and so much more. I'll miss working with you. And Charlie, I want to thank you for your endless support that you gave me. You made my job as commissioner so much easier, because you always responded quickly to my phone calls, emails, and my constituents' needs. Our city is blessed to have a great leader in you. Thank you so much. And to my fellow commissioners and mayor, thank you for your selfless service to our community. Together, we accomplished so much in these past six years. Opportunities that quite possibly could have been overlooked without the right team up here and the right staff supporting us were seized. I will always be proud to know we worked well together and worked through tough times while remaining respectful toward one another and always giving a positive image to our constituents. And downtown has been neglected for so long, and while other factors didn't help, like the peso devaluation, no real effort or investment had been made until we set our foot down. I know downtown is on the right track, so even though I leave, it's in good hands. All of our district is in good hands, and I know Commissioner Nice will keep working toward a great downtown. So you can always count on my loyal friendship and support for whatever you need me. And while every, each and every commissioner is special to me, I can't leave without mentioning you in particular, Rick. We were strangers six years ago and have since turned into brothers. You always gave me your opinion and never held it against me when I voted against you. And although I have a sister that I love dearly, my sister Joanna, I didn't have a brother until I met you. You've been for me, been there for me through thick and thin, and I'll always have your back. Thank you. Now, these past six years in public service have been a great experience for me. Helping the citizens of Brownsville was rewarding enough, but leaving with so many quality friendships is the greatest reward I could have ever asked for. The biggest one of all is meeting my wife and being asked by United Way to... So I'm laughing because it's a funny story. As a guest reader shortly after being elected the first time, I owe so much to our great city, and I will always owe them for introducing me to the love of my life and her wonderful family. So I'll end by saying that it's been my greatest pleasure and honor to serve you, Brownsville. This is not a goodbye, because I will always be around, and you can always call me, you can always visit my family's business, or you can visit my house. I'll always be there for you. So God bless you all, and God bless our great city of Brownsville. Thank you.
We will now go to our proclamations. Armando Sosa?
So this next proclamation is something very special to me, and I'll start off telling my story that about a month ago, I went to HEB, and of course, everybody in town was there. There were two shopping carts left, and of course, they were the only ones left because they were stuck together. So I placed my bag on the carts, and I start fighting with the carts, and meanwhile, there's another lady waiting for her cart too, she wanted the second cart, and so the carts break free, and I go flying, and my purse goes flying, and my coins, and my makeup, and my shopping list, and my city papers, and just everything that was in my purse came out flying like crazy, and so the lady waiting for the shopping cart starts laughing at me. And of course, you know, when somebody does something like that to you, you feel absolutely small and useless, and you go back to the second grade when you weren't as cool as you thought you were. And so I'm sitting there, humiliated outside of HEB with my purse all over the floor, just red, when somebody taps on my waist, and he says, "Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to help you, and it's okay, I'm here. Accidents happen, and I'm here, and I'm going to help you." And so I can't even explain how my world just reminded me that there are good people, and this is what we exist for, and this is what life is about, and this is what we do as humans, and we don't stand, and we don't laugh, and it's not funny, we run to help. And so I was amazed, and he was picking up all of my stuff and putting it back in my purse, and I was like, "I love you, who are you?" And so, right as I'm thinking all of these thoughts, his dad comes running from inside HEB, "Son, son, where, what are you doing?" And he sees him on the floor with me, and I look up, and I see that he is one of our own, he is an EMT, and my mouth falls again. One of our own, he is our own, both of his parents work in our EMS department, and he has followed, at the age of 12, in their footsteps to understand and identify when somebody is in need. And I truly, truly believe that people in our community who understand this at such a young age and understand that when somebody is in need of help, you help them. It was the most refreshing thing ever, and I take ownership to this family because they are Brownsville, and they are what makes our city beautiful. And so not only does his father save lives, and his mother coordinates it, but he has become a hero at the age of 12 to understand that this is who we are as Brownsville. So it is with much honor that I bring the entire family and the son to our city commission to recognize him for being the outstanding proof of what our city raises when you are good people. So without further ado, I will read the proclamation. So it's a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Armando Sosa III. Whereas, Armando Sosa was born June 26, 2004, in Brownsville, Texas. Armando is the son of Ana Benavides and Francisco Rodriguez. Whereas, Armando Sosa is known to friends and family members as a generous, noble, young man who enjoys helping his community. Armando's friendly personality and willingness to serve others are virtues that will benefit not only him, but those surrounding him. Whereas, Armando Sosa III regularly seeks opportunities to display acts of kindness towards people in his community, extending an opportunity for grace, dignity, and acceptance that might not otherwise be offered. Whereas, Armando Sosa III is currently enrolled in San Benito Riverside Middle School, San Benito, Texas. Armando aims to continue his dedication to public service by pursuing his career as a firefighter. And whereas, through acts of kindness, residents of Brownsville, Texas can promote healthy behaviors and positive dynamics within the community to strengthen relationships and civic pride. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Armando Sosa III and further call upon residents of Brownsville to demonstrate kindness towards one another and cultivate a culture of unity and respect. Done on the 16th day of May, 2017.
So if you'd like to say a few words?
And to thank you for the recognition, this really means a lot to me. Thank you.
And in all honesty, Commissioner, we weren't expecting this.
In all honesty, Commissioner, we weren't expecting this and he's, in other words, that's just who he is. You know, I mean, we try our best to bring up an excellent son and I have no complaints on him, but in all honesty, that's just him. You know, we contribute, but I think 90 or 50% of it is just him. That's who he is. He beats me, he sometimes gets me in trouble with my wife because I'm used to opening up the door for her and he'll beat me to it and he'll wink at me like, you know, "Yeah, I got you," you know? So that's just him, you know? But in all honesty, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it and it just caught us by surprise.
Ready? A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating the month of May 2017 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, the elderly and disabled are valued members of our community and it is just shared responsibility of the residents of Brownsville, Texas to ensure they live with dignity and safety. Whereas, through their wisdom and experience, the elderly have enriched our lives with contributions to the general welfare of Brownsville, Texas by helping to preserve the customs and the traditions by many people from diverse backgrounds. Whereas, by combating abuse and empowering the elderly and the disabled, the quality of life will be improved for all senior citizens, allowing them to continue to live independently as possible, as independently as possible, adding to their overall well-being. Whereas, abuse of the elderly people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem. Affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, in 2016, there were 83,534 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abuse in Texas, of which 51,608 were confirmed. Whereas, every citizen can make a difference in our community by recognizing and reporting the signs of abuse or neglect of the elderly and disabled to promote a culture of respect and safety. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate the month of May 2017 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to work together to help eradicate the abuse and neglect of people who are elderly and have disabilities. Done on the 16th day of May, 2017. Antonio Martinez, Mayor and the City Commission.
I just wanted to thank the Commissioners and Mayor for the recognition and I wanted to thank the staff in Cameron County for all their hard work and to encourage the public that if they suspect any abuse or neglect to an elderly or to a disabled person, to call our hotline. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Next, we have a presentation update on arboviral mosquitoes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. Let me begin by introducing Henry Perezas, Isaiya Perezas. He is our newest addition to the Health Department, courtesy of the Centers for Disease Control, and he is our Zika outreach nurse. And Mr. Jesus Rodriguez, who works for our Vector Control Department. And he's been with us for about two years, but most recently joined the Vector Control Department. They're here with me tonight as the presentation tonight is a part two of an earlier presentation I gave right after Brownsville experienced the first localized case of Zika and hope to come from time to time and give further updates on arboviral, Zika, and other diseases. So I'm really, really happy to see that we have a partnership with the Centers for Disease Control. We have contracted through Chikisola Nation Industries to provide a field of signing in Mr. Perezas. He comes to us as a local nurse with over 32 years of field experience, both as an EMT and as a registered nurse. He's also a U.S. veteran and previously worked in emergency room, trauma centers, ICU, psychiatric nurse manager at Valley Baptist Medical Center and has done a wide range of duties. And this new role of Zika is really good to have someone who has had such a wide range of experiences because as we had a call today during noon, it was obvious that some of the talents that are going to be needed when we talk about Zika is not only about public health, but about acute care. And I think that's where I'm headed when we talk about Zika. Zika is a very complicated response for public health departments. It really is a virus that has bridged what we used to call environmental health and healthcare. It is also something that the Centers for Disease Control has been working through local health departments because we have a viral disease that affects pregnant women and their effects from Zika are long-term. Congenital Zika syndrome, or microcephaly, does affect the brain tissue and problems feeding. And it's important that as we learn more about Zika and its effects in the body, that the updates that I give are as of today. Because as research is ongoing, what I'm saying here today could be subject to change based on additional research. But it's important for our city and Brownsville to be really in a leadership role as we learn and understand more about what is Zika. So what have we done so far? So far, Mr. Perezas has been able to reach out 35 physician practices, has attended three community events. This goes back since March, since March, and some of the events have been local events such as the Guinean Siguapango, CICLOBIA, BISD's Getting the Conversation Started Conference, and we're going to be at the Hurricane Awareness. We are also working with local promotoras and providing group trainings. And we're also working with our BISD, our idea public schools, Los Fresnos Independent School District, Port Isabel School District. Why? Because some of our local citizens attend these schools. And it's important that as we work to complete this work, that we're doing the widest range of outreach that we can do out in the community. One of our highlights so far has been we have a new web link created specifically for Zika outreach. I have placed the URL address and anyone from our community or anywhere else can go and get the latest information that's coming out from the CDC. They can always access the CDC website or the Zika websites that are available out there from Texas. But I want to say that we are getting some of the most current information direct from the CDC because of our partnership and our liaison nurse here in the city. So currently, Zika testing of infants delivered in Texas to mothers has been quite new work for us in the city. As more cases are being identified, not only locally, but in Texas, the protocols that are being used statewide and nationwide are changing. As a matter of fact, today, Texas and CDC are talking about making some more changes to the EPI form that is done. Why does that matter? It matters because in the future, you're going to be talking about infants potentially with Zika and then you need to start having conversations of what is the school district going to do with those special populations? What are we as a community going to be doing with those special populations? And also, what is going to be the rate? One out of how many children will be born positive with Zika? Living on the border provides us many advantages, but it also provides us some challenges. Some of the challenges is that we, at this point, are working very hard because, as you know, Zika spreads by two methods. One is a sexually transmitted infection and the other one through mosquitoes. One of the challenges for us is to do the outreach that when a mosquito tests positive for Zika, that we go back to that neighborhood and we look at our, what we call our mosquito counts. Since first learning about our first Zika case in late November, by January, we had set up a network of 48 traps and by the end of the summer, we hoped to be at 96 traps. It's important because every trap that we set up is sent to the laboratories in Texas and thus far to date, no Zika virus RNA has been detected by PCR testing. What we do know presently is what hasn't changed is we have the species of mosquitoes that transmit both West Nile, Dengue, Zika, and Chikungunya through both two species, Q.10s and Aedes mosquitoes. And that hasn't changed. So for that reason, it raises the challenge that we ask our local population to do everything they can to prevent mosquitoes around their home. Some of the red numbers that you see highlighted here, this is a new system that we began early in January and this is a snapshot of our May 2017 report. We currently have 52 traps. Our goal is by the end of the summer to expand to 96 traps. Our average per trap as of the 11th was 2.7 per trap, but we had a rain on Friday and we also had a hailstorm in Matamoros. These events affect us on this side of the border and this is why keeping this type of surveillance system is important because things will occur outside of our sphere of influence, but it's important that we know what is happening in our community, both with STI rates and with mosquito surveillance. So our vector control has been blessed by having some assistance from several departments. Parks and Rec, Public Works, and our department have worked to basically set up the surveillance system. We run the traps Tuesday once to Thursday and Friday and we get those counts back through DSHS. As we continue to add these and we go into the summer months, we only know the inevitable that our rates of mosquitoes will continue to increase, both in the city and in the county. So the City of Brownsville Health Department Vector Control activities, we're working on, we have several initiatives. One of them is with the EPA, another one is with the CDC. The first one with the EPA is currently in the works. We are working with an MOU with a PUB so that PUB and our city can collaborate to work on a different type of trap that doesn't involve the blood testing of mosquitoes to the lab. Essentially, we're just getting a population count of mosquitoes and by species at the wastewater facilities or the lift stations as they're coming in. This is important because these traps will help us to identify what the mosquitoes populations are. And one big, if I can teach a little bit of biology, is in human populations, we tend to look at population increase incrementally and the mosquitoes, they kind of increase and decrease based on seasonality. I wanted to end by saying we have two other programs that we're working with, the Centers for Disease Control with Mr. Perezas, and we are also working with a state unfunded mandate. As you may recall, the governor was here last week and it was a call to action. Really, a lot of the initiatives that were spelled out in that document, we were already ahead and I thought it was important for me to mention that today, that that call to action, in my opinion, was well-intended, but we were already a call to action a year ago. And I'd like to end by any questions?
If I may, Art, I want to thank you because I know that you and Commissioner Gowan have been instrumental. When I asked her about the Zika virus, when I first heard it from a friend that worked with the UT Health Science Center, I emailed you, Charlie, and Dr. Rose, and you all were already working on this. So I want to let the community know that your office and the city manager's office has been pumping in lots of money and we're fumigating every single afternoon. We've pumped in thousands of dollars. The governor came down and told us, "Brownsville, yes, you are in the middle of this." And he said, "Work on it." Most of the things he told us to do, we're already doing. And when we asked him, "Well, give us some money to pay back our city coffers of all this money we're spending in actually doing this mandate," he basically said, "Well, we don't have any money." So I want to thank the commission, I want to thank the city manager, and I want to thank Art because really, I mean, they understand the realities of what Zika can do for our community. So I just want to let the community know that we are deviating a lot of money from the general fund to stay on top of this and we haven't gotten any money from any other governmental entity. So this is a locally funded initiative. So this is Brownsville taking care of Brownsville. So I want to thank you, Art, I want to thank Charlie and Dr. Rose for being on top of this. So I just wanted to let the community know that we are monitoring this very closely because this is something we can't take lightly.
And I do want to say we are keeping a tally. We're at just under 200,000. That includes man-hours, equipment. We did get a CTBG grant, a small one, for the trails to use, well, we have nicknamed the gator, which is a small machine that fits into narrow alleys and narrow pathways. But also, we are keeping tally of all those expenses and I was told by federal authorities that I need to reach 1.3 million. I'm at 200,000 right now, but I'm going to continue the tally as long as that we're working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank PUB as well for working with you guys. So keep up the good work, okay?
I thank you as well and I want to remind folks that we're also blessed to have a School of Public Health campus in our city. There are many cities across the lower part of the United States that don't have that benefit. So Art and his staff are in constant contact with them, as well as the state folks, and that is a huge benefit for us here in the city of Brownsville.
So if I can add, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Puerto Rico CDC and the local School of Public Health and Dr. Mary Hayden to discuss potentially, one of the things I've been looking for is the ways, manners in that we can get to 96 traps and I'm hoping that through this initiative, we can do that.
Thank you, guys.
Item number five, consent agenda items.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Boards and Commissions, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint members to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, we were here a couple of weeks ago and filled two positions. We've got three new applicants to fill some existing vacant positions.
I don't know why, I read Donald Trump and like read Donald and then Torres and I got scared.
Pedro Torres and John Kench are new applicants on the board?
John Kench serves-
I'm sorry, he's already, I'm so sorry. Pedro Torres would be a new addition?
Yes, sir.
Would it be a possibility? Okay. Nevermind.
What do you want to slate?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven.
Consideration and action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mayor and Commissioners, we do have Alejandra Betancourt who resigned from this Convention and Visitors Bureau. So we do have two applicants, Omar Bereda and Ricardo Riz. So we're asking for one appointment.
I would like to move to appoint Omar Bereda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item number eight.
Public hearing and action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-018 to rezone from General Retail F to General Retail H for 0.137 acres for Lot 5, Block 246, Brownsville original town site located at 1114 East Ringel Street.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. This case was, just to give you a little background or history on this case, case 18 was presented to you back in March 21st and it got denied. So at the petition of you guys, so the City Commission, it got brought back and added to the agenda. It's a protested case, so, and then I'll mention that at the end, once we open the public hearing. So the applicant for this property, this is a .13 acre property located on Ringel Street and they are requesting to rezone into General Retail F to allow a triplex. The future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning. This property is located in the gateway corridor, which allows for a mix or a balanced mix of residential and commercial uses as well. Here's an aerial of the property and as you can see, there's already a little of multifamily apartments and single-family homes- apartments and single-family homes as well. This is the current lot, which is vacant. And again, this is a protested case, we receive a twenty percent to hit that that range and so it will require a three-fourth majority to to get overturned. And so P-
I thought this case was approved by P&amp;Z, but then, but then they came to city commission, but initially, when it first got here to us, it was not a protested case.
It was protested.
It was protested at the city commission?
It was protested. It was protested, but it got denied at city commission. But it got approved by P&amp;Z.
If I may, Commissioner, actually, I was one of the ones that voted against this, if you recall, and I met with the owners of the property, I actually went out and looked at the property and, because at the time, at the time being, when it was presented, it didn't really give us a picture of the actual property and everything around it. And voting against, I decided to go actually look and take a look at the property. It actually fits with the zone, the apartments do fit, the duplexes, so I mean, as I told the family, I made a decision which was erroneous, so I decided, I asked for a second, we brought it back and that's why I'm now asking for you guys to give me your support and approve this because honestly, with what was presented, I made a bad choice and I think it's of men, that you know, when we make a mistake, it's important that we retract and we learn from our mistakes, so that's why I now take the time to actually try to vet a lot of these properties, I go out and see them, because it's important that we make good, wise decisions. So that is the reason why it's back, Commissioner. So it was my mistake and that's why we did bring it back and now asking for the support to help the Salinas family.
Okay, now this is a public hearing, does anyone else here comment on this item? To close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero fourteen to rezon from Dwelling Z to General Retail G for zero-point-fifty-six acres for zero-point-fifty-five acre tract out of Lot Eight, Pomelo subdivision located at Three Pomelo's Lane.
So this is a request to rezon to General Retail. This is a point fifty-five acre property located on Pomelo's Lane and Dr. Hugh Emerson Road. The future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning. This property is located in the subregional node, which which calls for a balance between commercial and residential uses. Here's the area of the property, as you can see on the corner, that's currently, or it was at one point, a gas station and so we also have some single-family homes on Pomelo's Lane. Here's the front of the property, that's fronting Dr. Hugh Emerson, and so P&amp;Z is recommending to support the rezoning from Dwelling Z to General Retail.
Okay, this is public hearing, anyone here on this item?
Can I ask you a question? The two next items are tied into this, right?
So the next item, it's the, it's the property across the street, it's still on Pomelo's Lane.
So it's nine, ten, and eleven, right?
It's just, I think it's just-
Eight, nine, and?
It's just ten and, nine and ten, I'm sorry.
Eight, nine, and ten. Nine, nine, nine and ten.
Yes.
Anyway, we have to take them separately, but public hearing, anybody else here on this, on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten.
Item number ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero twenty-three to rezon from Dwelling Z to General Retail G for two-point-five-eight acres for lots one, two, and three, Pomelo subdivision located at Two Pomelo's Lane.
So this property, it's a point eighty-nine property located on Pomelo's Lane again, they are requesting to rezon to General Retail G. The future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning and so here's the area of the property, the property that we just got approved is on this other side, on the left-hand side. And so P&amp;Z is recommending to support the rezoning to General Retail.
Anyone here on this, on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven.
Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty to rezon from Dwelling Z to General Retail G for point eighty-nine fifty-three acres for Lot Six, Block Four, and Lot Nine, Block Four of Cameron Park subdivision in Cameron Park at Section Three located near Mesa Avenue.
So items eleven and twelve are technically together, they were submitted by the same applicant, just to quickly mention it, so the next item would include this lot right here. And so they are requesting to rezon to General Retail G and the proposed use is a neighborhood outreach center. It's from Projeto Juan Diego, I'm sorry. And so this property is located on Paredes Lane, at least one of the lots that is fronting Paredes Lane and the other one is on the back is fronting Mesa, Mesa Avenue, Avenida Mesa, I'm sorry. The future land use plan does support the proposed rezoning. This property is located in the town corridor and so the town corridor allows for commercial land uses and adult and child, child acres facilities as well as education centers, which fits right to the T for this project. And so here's the area of the property, as you can see, we have Bella Middle School, you know, across Paredes line, we also have a mix of General Retail as well as already medium retail, which includes plazas and, you know, offices and multifamily as well. So I guess on the right-hand side of Mesa, that's outside city limits, it's Cameron County. And so P&amp;Z is recommending to support the recommendation to rezon to General Retail G and it will be for for item eleven and for twelve is the same recommendation.
Okay, well, this goes, item number eleven, public hearing, anyone here on this, on that? You have no, no written opposition, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will read item twelve.
Okay, now.
Public hearing-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-one to rezon from Dwelling Z to General Retail G for zero-point-four-eight twenty-one acres, Lot Ten, Block Four of Cameron Park Edition located near Mesa Avenue. Public hearing?
I think you've showed us that that outline. Anybody here on that, on that particular item? There's no written opposition, if not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you remember, motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number thirteen.
Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-two to rezon from Dwelling Eight to Apartments H for zero-point-thirteen-seventy-seven acres for Lot Twelve, Block Sixty-seven of West Brownsville Edition located at seventeen-oh-four Madison Street.
So this is a request to rezon to Apartment H. This is a point thirteen property located on Madison Street and Seventeenth Street and they're requesting to allow up to six units. The future land use plan supports the proposed rezoning and so here's an area of the property, which already, there's, these over here are already apartments as well as this ones over here, the rest is single-family, the most prevailing land use. This is the the rear of the property on Seventeenth Street and over here is Madison. And so P&amp;Z is recommending to support the rezoning, but just to allow a maximum of three units, so it will be to Apartment H.
Okay. Anybody here on this item? If not, entertain a motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So point of order, so do you wish us to move to approve with the condition that only certain units are built or should we just approve it and you will handle the other portion of it?
Right, so Apartment H would only allow three units, that would be the maximum.
The ordinance itself takes care of that.
So the ordinance, the operation of it. Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen.
Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-three to rezon from Dwelling G to Medium Retail G for zero-point-two-six-four acres for Lot Five, Block Fifteen and Lot Two, Block Fifteen Ave, Brownsville Edition located near at eighteen-fifty-four East Fillmore.
So these items fourteen and fifteen are also together, they were submitted by the same applicant. The first request is to rezon to Medium Retail G and that would enable us to allow or even consider through a specific use route, extend the existing used car lot that is currently there. As you can see, this property right here, it's already light commercial, which is five-C and that's the zoning that is required to have a used car lot. However, you also need to be fronting a state-maintained road in order to to have that use allowed. And so, let me show you. So the property or the the used car lot is over here and the subject property is just to extend that existing used car lot. And so technically, it's not fronting a state-maintained road, so we are trying to, want to get the rezoning approved first and then consider the the specific use and let me just show you the site plan for the specific use. And so as you can see, one of the conditions or one of the the agreements that we, the agreement that we have with the owner is that access would only be through the, this is the current driveway for the existing used car lot business and so even though this property is the one that is being rezoned or these two properties, they won't have access through Fillmore Street because it's not technically a state-maintained road. And so that was kind of our way of working with the applicant. Originally, they had submitted an application, they got denied because they were not facing or fronting a state-maintained road, so that was just our way of working with the applicant. The specific use allows the used car lot in three-C and so technically, that's, that's not the case, but I think that was still reasonable to go, you know, the two levels, I think that's, that's still within, within the norm.
Okay, was there any opposition to this? Zero written opposition. Anyone here on this item?
Mayor, Mr. Genn, we have Mr. Small, Mr. Green.
Okay, thank, okay.
Just to take your advice and stuff.
Okay, great. Want to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-three dash S to allow an extension to existing used car lot in Medium Retail G for zero-point-two-six-four acres, Lot Five, Block Fifteen and Lot Two, Block Fifteen Ave, Brownsville Edition located near at eighteen-fifty-four East Fillmore.
So again, this will be to allow or to approve the specific use permit, so this is the second component.
Anybody here on this one? Okay.
Want to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen will be removed as per city staff, so we'll continue on to number seventeen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-five to rezon from Dwelling A Professional Office G to General Retail H Apartments H for ten-point-one-thirty-nine acres for share nineteen Espiritu Santo Grant located near Ruben Torres Boulevard and Hudson Boulevard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This property is fronting Ruben Torres and Hudson Boulevard, it's ten-point-thirteen acres. They would like to rezon two-point-fifty-five acres to General Retail H and seven-point-fifty-eight acres to Apartment H. It is consistent with our comprehensive plan. These are the existing uses, which is Walmart, there's retail, and there are single-family home neighborhoods in the area. This is the fronting of the property on Hudson Boulevard and this is like a preliminary site plan of the, of the area. Planning and zoning recommend to approve.
Anybody here on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Just kidding, just kidding.
I like that, I like that speed.
[laughing].
Is there a second, I have a second question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-six to rezon from Dwelling A to General Retail G for Lot Four, Block One of La Vida Number Eight located at twenty-one-ninety-five Tulipon Street.
This applicant is requesting to rezon from Dwelling G to General Retail. This property is fronting Tulipon Street and by Gayo Ni Baverde. They currently already have a mechanic shop, so they just want to extend it to the, to the subject property. This is a zero-point-eleven acres, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The surrounding areas are single-family and duplexes and of course, the mechanic shop and a little bit of light retail in the area. This is the property and planning and zoning do recommend to approve.
Anyone here on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-seven to rezon from Apartment H to General Retail G for point-two-eighty-five acres for Block Six of Original Town Site located at one-oh-four East Jackson Street.
This applicant's requesting to rezon from Apartment H to General Retail G, it's fronting Jackson Street, it's zero-point-twenty-eight acres, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. In the area, there are plazas, multi, you know, multifamily and retail. This is the property and planning and zoning recommend to approve.
Is there anyone here on this item?
Let me ask you a question, like on that property, when they build, will they have to build the sidewalk?
Yes.
It's in our ordinance.
All right. Otherwise, I'll hear a motion to close-
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty.
Item number twenty, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-eight dash CO to rezon from Light Industrial J, General Retail H to Medium Industrial J for one-point-zero-six acres for Lot One, Block One of Bonnet subdivision located at thirteen-thirty-four Morningside Road.
This property is one-point-zero-six acres, it is fronting Morningside, they're requesting to rezon from Light Industrial J and General Retail H, so they currently have two separate zonings and they want to rezon the entire property in, to Medium Industrial J, which is Eighth Commercial. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use plan. In the area, there are single-family homes, there's mechanic shops, there's single, multifamily apartments, so it's a lot of mixed use in the area. This is the, it's actually, right now, currently, like a clothing store for, and to sell second-hand clothing and also to make like bales of clothing. So this is currently a protested case, it was protested for P&amp;Z. Planning and zoning do recommend to approve with the condition to only permit the sale of second-hand clothing in warehouses for bills and to prohibit all other uses under medium industrial. So this is a protested case, so it would be three-fourth majority.
Okay, anyone here on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And approve?
Second.
All those in favor, now, what happens, that restriction that you have, is that part of the ordinance or is it?
Um, yes, well, we've, we've included, we've included a CO.
Okay, motion approved, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one.
Public hearing number twenty-one, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two-thirty-five dash twenty-seventeen dash zero forty dash S to allow a duplex H in a General Retail H for zero-point-thirteen acres, Lot Three, Block Twenty-One of Baya Vista Third Edition located at twenty-two forty-four Polk Street.
This property is fronting Polk Street, it's zero-point-thirteen acres, the applicant's The applicant's requesting a specific use permit to allow duplex and general retail H. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. In the area, there are plenty of single-family and multi-family units. This is the property. And they provided a site plan. And planning and zoning do recommend to approve the specific use permit for a duplex.
Anyone here on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-two.
Public hearing number twenty-two, public hearing in action on first read on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty seventeen dash zero forty-one to rezon for professional office G to general retail G for one point fourteen sixty acres of west and a half of lot one, block U of Brownsville London Improvement Company subdivision located at four oh nine Boca Chica Boulevard.
This applicant is requesting to rezon their property from professional office G to general retail G. It's one point fourteen acres fronting Boca Chica Boulevard. The proposed use is a party place. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The surrounding areas are apartments, single-family homes, and a few retail. This is the property right now. And planning and zoning do support this approval.
Okay. Anyone here on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
This is a public comment period. We do have.
Commissioners of the City of Brownsville, after all the wonderful vibrations and frequencies in here, I feel kind of like the wet rag in the room.
If you don't mind stating your record, your name for the record.
My name is Cheryl La Fuente. I live at one seventy-five Draper Drive in Brownsville, Texas.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry?
You're welcome.
Thank you. I've grown up on Draper Drive off and on for the past forty-five years. I don't want to hear a word about my age. And I've watched FM eight oh two move from what is Coffee Port Road to Ruben Torres. And my point that I'm getting at is, when we first moved out there, it was all Monte. Nothing was out there. Slowly but surely, houses and neighborhoods have built up around us. City of Brownsville has been doing a real good job of keeping our neighborhoods safe and protected, clean. Draper Drive has been needed repaving for decades, and the residents seem to be content with the occasional potholes being temporarily filled until the next good rainfall, which tends to flood about fifty yards of the street until it's unimpassable. My main address tonight is that at two forty-four Draper Drive is a home that, when that house was built five years ago, instead of building a retaining wall along the risaka, he had extremely heavy equipment go down the street, which hauled boulders that he put along the grass line and the risaka. Tore up the front of his street and some of the neighbors. However, the only regret that I have is that I wasn't able to retrieve any of the pictures that were taken at the time. Neighbors in the neighborhood complained about it, and his response was, it's Brownsville PUB. They're putting in water lines. They're destroying the street. I worked at Brownsville PUB Water Department at the time, and the water lines go directly across from his house. On April fourth, I have pictures to show. City of Brownsville crew showed up to that two forty-four Draper Drive and worked on the street directly in front of his residence. Public Works truck number four eighteen, two oh five driver directed the employees during this street repair project. The section of the street is still not blacktopped. It still looks exactly the way as it does in the pictures, which is just the colice. This colice, when people drive down the street, is using as, being used as projectiles. It end up in my yard and my house. My question is, and I apologize for sounding tacky, is can citizens request and pay the city services for personal use such as fixing the streets in front of their homes? How was this resident able to have the street repairs done in front of his residence? And how much will it cost taxpayers of Brownsville? Since the beginning of the repair in front of his residence home, he's bragged to the general public and to coworkers and said all it took was a sleight of hand. Neighbors are not happy, however, I seem to be the one that barks among the pack of dogs in the neighborhood. And I'm sure that bringing this up to the board will cause some retaliation. This is my concern. I wanted to make you aware of it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Okay. Item number twenty-four.
Consideration in action on resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero twenty-eight, canvassing and declaring the results of the general municipal election held on the sixth day of May twenty seventeen and the issuance of certificates of election for the purpose of electing an Ad-Large Commissioner B., a District Commissioner Three, and a District Commissioner Four.
Mayor, Commissioners, we did have the election on May sixth, and there were no runoffs. There was no contested, there was no recount done, so we are asking to approve this item. But before I did, I would just like to thank the city secretary staff. The election was run smoothly, and just wanted to acknowledge that. So I would ask for your approval on this item.
Motion to approve?
I guess we got somebody to sign the bill too.
Sometimes I was out there with it.
Can I see that?
Charlie.
Can I see that? It says District Two.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the general election results?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, there's already a motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I would like to add that after this motion has been approved, we will have the swearing-in of the new commissioners on May twenty-third at five o'clock. It would not be a commission meeting, it would just be a public meeting for swearing-in on May twenty-third at five p.m.
Okay. Be sure and send us an email.
Yes.
Action item number twenty-five, consideration in action to adopt reimbursement resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero nineteen, expressing official intent to reimburse with tax exemption obligation proceeds costs associated with certain capital improvements.
Admiral Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this reimbursement resolution, what this resolution calls for is, it allows or authorizes the city to begin spending up to fifteen million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on capital projects that are identified on slide three, and I'll show you slide three shortly. Of course, this capital expenditures will be charged to the CEO fund, which is the construction fund of the twenty seventeen CEOs, and paid from general fund, temporary inter-fund loan to the construction fund with the understanding that the general fund will be reimbursed by the CEO fund once the proceeds are received, once the CEO is issued. The proposed projects that are included in this particular reimbursement resolution are five million dollars for streets, five million for the central library renovation, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four ninety-seven for park improvements, seven hundred and sixty thousand for the main police station, chillers and plumbing, and the local share on the Tiger grand of three million, six sixty-seven, five oh three. Again, this is a reimbursement resolution. You are not authorizing the issuance of the debt tonight. All we're requesting from you is for us to start, start beginning to spend some of these funds with the understanding that the, that the cap, that the general fund, in this case, because the general fund is going to make the loan to the capital projects fund, and then they get reimbursed from the proceeds of the CEO.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Pete.
Mr. Gonzalez, to follow up on that, can you make sure to give us a list of the actual streets so we can allow the public to know? Because I think it's important for them to understand that this is the first stage in many where we have to start working on our capital improvement, which are needs that the city has had for many years, and we just never have really gotten back into the role of actually replacing a lot of these, actually refurbishing a lot of our buildings like the library, which have been for many years where we haven't pumped any money into it. So hopefully, you can bring us a list back, and that way you can present it to the general public, and they're aware of where the money is going to. Because I think it's important for our citizens to realize, well, you know, yes, it is debt. We're paying down the debt very quickly, but it's important for them to realize that their tax, their tax monies are actually going to streets, drainage, sidewalks, library, things that we all use as a community. So it's important that we give them some transparency, and they're aware of what we're going to use the money for.
We will do.
Please.
Item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, consideration in action to adopt reimbursement resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero twenty-nine, expressing official intent to reimburse with tax exempt obligation proceeds costs incurred to purchase certain vehicles and equipment.
Again, this is another reimbursement resolution, but it will be issued from public property financed contractual obligations instead of a certificate of obligation. It's because it's for vehicles and equipment. And it's going to be done on the same basis as we did the first one. We go ahead and start spending and then get reimbursed as soon as the debt is issued and the proceeds come in. And the, what's being covered here is got a list of several vehicles. It's got fire department has five hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. It includes pickups, it includes booster trucks, Ford Explorer, light vehicles that are listed here on that schedule totaling four hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and two. They're mostly obviously light vehicles. And then we have other equipment listed on this particular schedule totaling three million, eight seventy-one, for a total of five million dollars.
Now, if I may add, we go back, Mr. Gonzalez and I have been having this discussion. So we invest a lot of money every year in our fleet maintenance. A lot of our cars, they go out of warranty, and then we're just pumping in money into these vehicles. So part of the program that the city manager's office is trying to do, we're trying to purchase vehicles and replace them and keep our vehicles under warranty and keep replacing them as soon as the warranty is up, and that way we have a cost-saving measure in the long term. And it's the same principle behind most of the police vehicles we now see out in the streets. Our fleet maintenance was over a million dollars. So we figured out that if we purchased so many vehicles and we replaced them every couple of years, they would be under warranty and would actually save the city money in the long term. So this kind of goes in line with that, where we're trying to get all our fleet under warranty and replace them when the time, when it comes due. Correct.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, consideration in action to acknowledge the financial statements and cash investment report for the City of Brownsville for the second quarter ended on March thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Commission. My name is Jorge Santillán, Assistant Finance Director. And this presentation is included in your electronic binder. These are the financial statements for the second quarter ended March thirty-first, twenty Some of the financial highlights, which I'm going to cover with in more detail in the following pages. The sales taxes are below last fiscal year numbers by three point twenty-one percent, five point ten percent below budget projections. Eighty-nine point sixty-eight percent of the tax levy has been collected through the second quarter. That's a little, slightly higher from last year's collections of eighty-nine point fifty-eight percent. Based on the second quarter receipts of this fiscal year, Veterans Bridge revenues have increased fourteen point twenty-three percent for the same period as last year and fifty-two point twenty-one over budget projections. The unemployment rate for calendar year twenty sixteen was a seven point two, compared to seven percent in twenty fifteen. Through the first three months of the calendar year twenty seventeen, it's eight point fifty percent. Utility expenditures are five percent lower than last fiscal year. Hotel motel receipts are fifteen point three or eighty-two thousand, four forty-seven lower than the same period as fiscal year twenty sixteen. And then building permit evaluations have increased at twenty-seven point ninety-six percent through March as compared to fiscal year twenty sixteen. These are the sales tax for the, comparing twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. We see on the, for the month of February, that's a decrease compared to actuals from last year. That's a ninety-three, point ninety-three percent decrease or a two point eighty-five decrease compared to budget. Through the very last numbers, the actual year-to-date increase or decrease is a three point twenty-one percent. When compared to budget, that's a four, five point ten percent decrease.
Where, where in the presentation in this package are you at, sir?
I'm sorry, this is the, should be the, that's a slide. Number four.
We did not include it because it was turned in after we had already delivered the packets.
I have a copy here. On the slide number five, we have the same information with the sales taxes. This is the data from, all the way from two thousand and seven through March, for, through twenty seventeen through March. And we see that through, from fiscal year twenty ten, there have been increases all the way to twenty sixteen. Like I said, there's, we're below budget projections. We still have six more months to go, so we'll be updating the commission on the collections. This is the analysis on the Veterans Bridge cash payments. And on the last two amount, two lines, we have the actual year-to-date increase is fourteen point twenty-three percent increase. The budget year-to-date increase is fifty-two point twenty-two. Now, these budget numbers are provided by the Cameron County during the budget process, so that's the numbers that we use. This is a graph on the collections for the, from the Veterans Bridge cash payments. And we can see from twenty fourteen, the last, beginning with twenty fourteen, there have been increases the last three years. Twenty seventeen, we also projected to have another, at least the same numbers as twenty sixteen or maybe an increase. This is the crossings, Veterans Bridge crossing analysis for the last fiscal, three fiscal years and twenty seventeen through March. As we can see, there's been increases every year. The twenty seventeen is in line or to meet the twenty sixteen numbers also. This is the analysis of the crossings by category for the last three fiscal years and also fiscal year twenty seventeen through March. The first category, we have the auto and motorcycle crossings. As we can see, there has been increases every year. The, the next one is the commercial vehicles. Also, there has been increases each year. And the twenty seventeen, for those two first categories, we're projected to also meet the twenty sixteen numbers. The miscellaneous, those are miscellaneous, there have been, except for the twenty fifteen, a slight decrease, but an increase in twenty sixteen. This is on the general fund, the revenues and expenses, the first column on the left side, we have a total budget of one hundred and one million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five sixty-nine. Actual spend to date, sixty-two million, three seventy-four, five seventy. The total budget, the right column, one hundred and seven million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, two twenty-seven. Actual spend to date is fifty-one thousand, million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four ninety. These are the comparison, the building permits, evaluations between fiscal year twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen through March. As we can see on the very last number, the percentage, the percentage increase is twenty-seven point ninety-six percent. And as you can notice on the apartment complex, that's the major increase in the evaluations. This is the graphical representation of the values for each since two thousand and The BPUB cash transfer in utilities, on the first top line, we have the cash transfer. There have been increases from beginning with the twenty fourteen through twenty sixteen. Twenty seventeen, those are budget numbers. That's only, that's the budget numbers that eventually, hopefully will be slightly higher. The line below, those are the utility services, and they have been pretty stable since twenty The unemployment rates, this is by calendar year. The last, last calendar year was a seven point twenty percent. The first three months, the average is eight point fifty percent. This is the balance sheet for the general fund comparing the fiscal, fiscal year twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen through March. On the right column, we have the total assets through March, fifty-three million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five sixty-six. The, followed by liabilities, thirty million, eight thirty-five, three fifty- The followed by liabilities, 30,835,351. And plus, we have the fund balances, all the components that make the total fund balance of 40,134,0215. We combined the liabilities and fund balances totaling 53,969,566.
What is, those investments went up 10 million? How did we go from one year to the next? You see, I think it's 21 to 32 mil in investments.
Those are the, okay, that's a-
Those like fixed access?
No, those are actual, actual cash, actual investments.
Actual investments.
Yes. The, if you look at total assets, the difference is almost like 6 million in a year span of, that's the difference. This is the, this is estimate how we plan to end the year based on projections in the general fund. We start the year with 21,024,51. Then we add the projected revenues of 101,898,804. That's total amount available of resources is 122,928,55. Then minus the projected expenses, budgeted expenses, which equal 104,524,310. And the estimated unassigned fund balance as of September 30, 2017, 18,398,545. This is just an estimate. And if we end up with that fund balance, that would be 17.60 percent of budgeted expenses and transfers out. Now, the goal is to be above 15 percent. These are the summary of the components of the fund balance, of the five components, the total, the last column, the last amount, 40,134,0215. This is the revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance. This is the revenues total. The first column, we have the amended budget, 99,797,569. The second column, those are the actuals through March, 62,000, 62,374,570. And then the third column, that's the percentage of the amount of the budget received, 62.50 percent of the budget, and then the variance, the last column. Being the property taxes and sales taxes the major components of the revenues. This is just a graphical representation of the revenues comparing 2016 to 2017, also including the 2017 budget on the green bars. This is the expenditure section of the general fund revenues and expenditures. We have total, again, the first column, that's the amended budget, the latest, 100,706,578. The second column, 49,446,433. The amount spent to date through March 31st, that's 49.10 percent. And the last column, that's the variance between budget and actuals. On the second column, we have also the, basically the difference between revenues and expenses. Basically, we have revenues over expenses of 12,928,138. We deduct the following number, the 2,015,58, that's where the transfers out. And the difference between revenues and expenses and transfers out, that's 10,913,080. We add that amount to the beginning fund balance of 29,021,135. That results in the ending fund balance through March 31st of 40,134,0215. That's the last amount on the second column. These are the, again, the graphical representation of the expenses. This is just the history and assigned fund balance. It's also more history on the fund balances. Again, more history. And this is also all the history on the different components of the fund balance for the last four fiscal years. This is the, as of March 31st, this is the different fund balances, the components, the assigned, committed, restricted and spendable. The total, the last amount, 10,426,271. This is the comparison of revenues and expenses, expenditures for the special revenue funds through March 31st. We have the convention and tourism fund. We look on the revenues over or under expenditures. In this case, we have, they're under revenues, negative 727,735. There's a footnote at the bottom that we still have pending a transfer in from the general fund that has not been done yet. The amount of that transfer is 378,961. Because we had a positive fund balance at the beginning of the year, right now we have a positive fund balance of 335,372. The second, community development, the revenues under expenses, negative 725,64. That's because we have some grant revenue that has not been received yet, but will be received in the following month. At the end of the year, those revenues and expenses, they equal, they match. The following is the landfill tipping fee. Again, we have a negative variance revenues under expenses. Again, we have a positive fund balance at the beginning of the year. Right now, we have a positive fund balance through March 31st. This is the debt service funds, both of them, this is money that has been set aside to cover future debt service in the, for the rest of the fiscal year. This is the enterprise funds. We have the first, the airport fund, revenues over expenses, 92,479. Bridge fund, revenues over expenses, 1,027,068. Motor vehicle parking system fund, 50,685. And the golf center, we have revenues under expenses of 103,509. Again, there's a footnote that we still need to complete a transfer from the general fund. We have right now a positive net position at the beginning of the year, so that's why we have also a beginning, a positive net position also. This is the B Metro. This is through March 31st. This is all the revenues and expenses. The first slide shows the operating revenues, charges for services, 568,500. The second section, we have all the operating expenses. Those are all the department, for operating departments. Total operating expenses, 2,545,457. The loss before non-operating revenue and non-operating expenses is 1,976,957. Here we have the non-operating revenue and expenses. We have rents, emissions revenue, expenses relating to the Metro Connect, Metro Connect and the FTA planning projects. And all those are projects, the net revenues and expenses non-operating equal 1,183,132. The loss before transfers and contributions is 3,160,89. Then we add the transfers and contributions, contribution from the FTA. Those are the first three, four lines, four amounts. The fourth amount, the FTA share operating loss, the 619,89, that's the amount to cover the 1.976,957. So basically, through March, the FTA is contributing, contributing at almost 31 percent of the loss. Then we have all the transfers from the general fund for capital contributions. And then the very last amount, that's the general fund operating contribution, almost 42 percent of the loss, that's 818,075. Total transfers and contributions, 3,160,089. This is the medical insurance fund. We have the first section, we have the contributions. They equal, they total 6,515,059, less expenditures on the medical insurance claims. They total 7,142,929,64. Receipts under contributions, the negative is, the deficit, 627,870. Then we add the beginning fund balance, the fund balance on the end of March 31st is negative 455,374,88. Now, Mr. Granado, he will approach the City Commission to request a budget amendment to cover this deficit in the future, upcoming meeting.
Mr. Granado?
Mr. Granado. Here we have the investment report. We look at the very last column through March 31st, these are the balances on the investments. In the first section, we have the demand deposits, the 21,351,026, followed by the investments in certificates of deposits. The total, they equal, they total 5,207,823. Investment in the investment pools, 22,000, 22,612,245. And then investments in other obligations of governmental entities, they equal 1,55,930. Total investments portfolio is 50,227,258. This, we have the distribution on the investments, basically 42.51 percent of the portfolio going to demand deposits, 10.37 percent going to CDs, and then 45.02 percent to investment pools, and then 2.09, 2.09 percent to obligations of governmental entities. And then the weighted average days to maturity, 51.53 days. This is below the allowable of 270. The average yield is, of the investments, 0.726, slightly below the three-month yield of the treasury bill of 0.75 percent. And then this is just the distribution on the graphical pie chart. And that's the presentation. Questions?
Move to acknowledge?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 28, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of police pistols for the Bronzwell Police Department.
Mayor, City Commissioner. In the fall of 2016, we started testing evaluation on a new police pistol. Our current pistol is the SIG 226. It's around our 10th year with it, and it's time to replace. It's just a simple replacement. During the testing evaluation, we tested SIG, Glock, and also FN. And based on our committees, which were compiled of rank-upile officers, SWAT officers, detectives, they went with the SIG P320. That's also the same weapon that the United States government has gone with in military. It's a striker-fire system, it's newest, latest. But when we did the cost analysis, it actually turned out to be the cheapest. Total cost for our departments can be $26,555 to replace 270 weapons. So we're requesting your approval of this.
Awesome.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 29.
Tasers, Commander. We need tasers. I want to get one of these where, hey, you're going to buy taser for the department, so I'll write you an email, sir.
And then I'll behave as a good taste. Action item number 29, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of police leather gear for the Bronzwell Police Department.
Yeah, this item is actually just in conjunction with the first item. It's just simply holsters and mag pouches. And we got two vendors, both buyboard contracts. We went with the lowest vendor. It was $8,000 cheaper, so we went with the lowest vendor, and it's just a simple replacement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander.
Action item number 30, consideration and action to approve the purchase of one new ethical vertical storage tank for the city of Bronzwell Public Works Department.
Santana, how come they always put you at the last?
The closer.
The closer.
Admiral Mayor, City Commissioners, tonight requesting your approval to award a contract for the purchase, delivery and installation of a new 7,000-gallon vertical oil storage tank for the Public Works Department. To Cooper Electric, Cooper Equipment Company out of San Antonio, Texas, in the amount of The procurement reflects a buyboard contracting price. The new tank will serve as a replacement for the department's current tank, which has experienced internal damages beyond repair due to deterioration. The tank's actually 13 years old. The replacement tank will store asphaltic motion oils. These materials are critical components to our street paving and maintenance program, providing the necessary binding for the aggregate during our paving projects and patching projects. Funding for this contract is in place at CO fund, account number 88417942.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.